Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, and welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Tuesday, July 15, 2025. Before we get started, let me introduce the board. On my far left is Mark Lemus. Next to him, Kevin Baum. And then Laura Davies, Vice Chair. To my immediate right, Esther Olson-Murphy, Clerk. And to my far right, John Dal Santo. And we will have a varying group of people depending on the application who is seated and who is voting this evening. But let's get started with the new business, please. So this is the application of Dr. Hannah Wells for a variance.
Do you want to do this or no?
I will.
Okay.
For a variance from Article 4, Section 4.4, Schedule 3, for relief from the side yard setback for the proposed construction of a 15-by-20 addition to the existing structure, which is a veterinary wellness center located at No. 2 Continental Drive. Subject property is located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District and is identified as Tax Map Parcel 47-2-1. This is ZBA Case 25-5. Is the applicant here? Please.
Before we start, can we decide who's voting? Because we have six.
That's a good point. Thank you. Let's see. I would assume that the four regular members, so it's between John and...
I'll abstain, John. You can have your first one.
John, you're voting on this case?
Well, I was gonna... I mean, it's the first time I've been here.
John, you're voting on this case?
You gotta vote sometime.
Jump in both feet.
At least you're not elected to an officer on your first appearance. Mark, you can participate in the discussions, of course, but the four regular members in the center and Mr. Dal Santo will be the voting members on this. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good. Please introduce yourselves and let us know what's going on.
I'm Dr. Hannah Wells and my husband, Dan Fortier. We own the Veterinary Wellness Center in Exeter. So we are an integrative veterinary practice. So we do traditional veterinary medicine, but we also do offensive integrative. Sorry. Is that better? Yes. So we do integrative medicine as well, which in my world includes acupuncture, herbal medicine, and rehabilitation. So rehabilitation is the part of the business that we are looking to expand at this time. I'm certified in rehabilitation and have extra training in that, as well as acupuncture and traditional Chinese medicine, as well as a 30-plus-year veterinarian.
Okay. Tell us about the application.
So the application is for a variance from the relief of the 30-foot side setback for this building. Purchased this building in June of 2021, and we remodeled the inside of it to suit our needs, which has worked out really well. And we put a... We knew that we wanted to do rehab at that time, so put our... It's a really nice, large room for rehab on that one side of the building. Yep, I have that. So we would like to do... Add in a underwater treadmill, as that really enhances the rehabilitation of most of my patients. And so in order to do that, we do need a different space than what we have now. And the most suitable location for that, as far as where the drains are of the existing building and where the existing rehab is, as well as flow of traffic and minimizing impact on parking, is on that side of the building. And right now, it's, you know, it's a nice area to be able to do and hopefully does not impact anybody else if we do it there.
When you say drains, you mean internal?
I mean, internal and where the... Is it called the clean-out drain? As for the main... The main line is on that side of the building. So that will minimize the additional work and strain on the building plumbing if we put the addition on that side of the building, because the clean-out is right there.
I assume you're on water and sewer?
We are.
Okay. Town water and sewer.
Yes.
I assumed you have water.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So the alternate locations do not appear to be as suitable, from your perspective, behind the building, for example?
Correct. So behind the building, there is a... It's not a drainage ditch, but it's a collection ditch of some kind that has been there, that was in the original building plan that I assume cannot be altered. In addition, on the side of the building is where all the parking is, and on the front of the building is the parking as well.
Okay. One of the things about a variance, of course, is that you have to be able to not have a viable alternative.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Is there anything else you'd like us to know? I think we've all read this. Some of us have looked at the property.
Yeah. If you have any questions as to... You know, we're hoping to obviously add to the community by having this service and add to our integrative service. We think we'll be able to help a lot more patients in the community if we can add this service in, so...
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from members of the board?
If you could describe the existing detention, exterior water detention area. I was not able to get out to the property, so...
Sure. You mean in the back of the building?
Yeah. I do see it. I see it on your site plan. But it looks like it's mostly in that back corner. And so I'm trying to explore whether there is any... What the real limits on the space are? And if you could just explain what you did to sort of explore the potential or lack of potential for using that area?
Appreciate the question. So in the back of the building, there is this drainage, and it actually, if you were to go out there, the property itself goes out. And then it is a dip, you know, for catching. In addition to that, there's a very large rock. It's not even a wall. There's a lot of boulders in that back area. So I think the excavation piece would be fairly challenging back there as well, in that back portion of the building. And I didn't... I was trying to avoid altering anything that was originally on the site plan that was obviously there for a reason. Somebody decided 20 years ago that that needed to be there. So my thought was trying to avoid disruption, you know, minimize disruption to site plans that have been put in place for a particular reason.
This on the... Kevin, on this particular chart, which is in our packet, there's this thing that looks like a snake going across there. There's a fairly significant swale. Less than 10 feet from the back wall of the property. 10 feet from the back wall of the property.
It covers the whole back of that whole property. Property's 50 feet wide. It's gigantic.
The whole width of that building is that swale.
It's pretty... It's really noticeable. And I'm... So I... Yeah.
It's not something I felt, based on the fact that it was an original site plan, that it should be disturbed because it was obviously there for a reason. And it is a significant... Like, if you went down into that, you'd have to take, I don't know, at least seven or eight steps to get down into it.
Right. And it's about how many feet off of the back?
It's not far off the back. We have a sidewalk where we have a freezer out there, and then maybe four or five feet from that. So probably a total of...
10 feet from the building.
10 feet at the most from the building before you get down.
Do you ever have problems when it rains with standing water on the property?
Not in the side of the property where I'm looking to do the addition, no, because there is a... You know, it's flat, and then it swells down to where Tire Warehouse is.
Again, based on this plan, it looks as though it was designed to take water away from...
It is. So it's sloped to take water away. The parking lot is a little bit sloped as well. And there's also on the side, the other side, there is a retention wall. There's a retention wall and a little culvert along that side of the building as well.
Sorry, which side?
The opposite side to where my proposed addition is and where the parking lot is on the side of the parking lot. So I wouldn't be able to really extend the parking lot further on that side of the lot line because there is a little bit of a culvert on that side, too.
Retaining wall or...
It's not a retaining wall, but it's a pretty good rock wall. Again, more boulders.
If you look at the plan on the far side of the parking lot, it's a swale over there, too. So you can't even shift the parking lot over.
That's right.
Designated as wetlands on one of your plans.
Correct. There's only... There's like a jog in there that's wetlands. And it truly is wetlands.
Okay.
Gets wet.
So moving the driveway is not an option?
Moving the driveway is not an option.
Any further questions from members of the board? Ms. Davies?
Just the materials. It's... I see you have elevations, and that's helpful. Are the material... You know, the exterior material's gonna be basically the same or similar to the existing building?
Exactly. We'll match it.
Like, it'll be like a concrete block?
Correct.
Or anything like that?
Yeah. It'll be... Yeah. It'll be the same.
It's currently vinyl siding. So it'll just be vinyl sided.
It'll match the building.
Okay.
I have a question for Doug, just getting to the site plan. Do you know if this would require, if approved, that this would require... It'd just be administrative for the site plan amendment?
It'd be administrative, within the office.
Okay.
The decision will be made based on square footage.
Okay. No further questions from members of the board? I'll open it up to the public at this time. Thank you. And we'll be back to you in a minute. If any members of the public would like to address this application, either pro or con, please don't go far. I have a feeling there's no one here. If any members of the public would like to address this application, please step forward at this time. Going once? Only twice? Hearing none? And since there's no need for you to rebut any...
Bob, do you want to...
Public testimony?
We do have an email.
I am gonna read that, yes. Yeah.
She might want to rebut that.
Yeah. You might want to rebut this, as a matter of fact. So we did receive a letter... Excuse me. An email from Marcia Markey, who is the owner of 162 Epping Road, which, if we look at your chart, is not next to you, but is sort of behind and to the side. And, "Dear Mr. Pryor, I, Marcia M. Markey, owner of 162 Epping Road. I'm unable to attend the July 25, 2025 zoning board meeting. Being a distance away, I would like you to consider the following of Dr. Hannah Wells' setback variance application. I oppose the setback variance for the reasons listed below. The applied-for setback variance will impact my property for a proposed buyer considering enlarging my existing building or constructing a larger building on-site. The ordinance observed will not add value to my property with limitations for resale growth. Substantial justice is not achieved for my property with a building addition closer to my lot line, including overgrowth of vegetation in area of 15 feet." I'm reading literal. It's not my grammar. "Value of my property will be diminished as 15 feet from lot line, the abutting of proposed building will restrict land use of my property. Unnecessary hardship consists of restrictions of future sales. And finally, I feel the supplied-for setback variance will be a financial benefit for applicant, adding an underwater treadmill with a price at a very large cost to me as written above. Thank you for consideration of my opposed concerns." I think all members of the board have received this note as well. And I just want to make note that this is not the abutting property on the side that is being considered for this variance, but is rather the property that is behind you and extends behind... Is it Tire Warehouse that's next to you?
Correct.
As well as behind you and abuts on Epping Road?
Correct.
So I've read that into the record. Do you want to comment on that at all before we move to deliberations?
So to comment on those particular points, that it will impact...
Do you need a copy of this before you respond?
We have a fresh one, so you don't have to use Bob's all-marked up.
Yeah, you're right. I made them... You guys are awful hard on me. I know it is.
In general, I don't think that this is accurate. Her comments are accurate because if you look at her property and where the proposed addition is of ours, it is not... It is not even close to their property line because we're on the side. If we were to do the back, which is, you know, where that culvert is that we talked about, then I think, you know, she may have a comment if we were to extend into the setback zone. But the we... The addition is proposed on the side, which borders Tire Warehouse. And if you look at her property line... It's nowhere near it. I don't know how that... How any of that is... I'm not even sure how to answer that because it's not relevant because it's nowhere near her side. So her property borders our property on one side only. And it is not... The addition proposal is not on that side. So therefore, I believe that this... Her comments that it will infringe on her ability of someone to extend their building is not valid.
I do have one question that comes from... I'm not sure I fully follow the comment, but she does talk about the vegetation in the area. Do you have plans? It looks like there are some exterior windows on the back. I mean, that... I did look, looking at the aerial photos. It looks like that it is pretty well vegetated between your building and Tire Warehouse.
Correct.
Mostly on your property. So do you have plans for how you're going to deal with that vegetation? And are you maintaining... What type of buffer do you plan to maintain between the two properties?
It is definitely in our best interest to maintain aesthetic buffer and maintain the natural buffer that is there for many reasons aesthetically and financially, not to have to redo it. The length, the width of the addition does not impact that line of trees that you see.
Okay.
So those won't... They might have to be trimmed up a little bit on the top, but we do not have an intention of taking down those trees or that natural buffer. Or any vegetation. It's actually quite... It's quite flat there.
Okay. So there's enough room between the buildings without...
Yes. We may have to, again, limb a tree or two with the very top, but that's about it.
And would you be open if we were to... Let's impose a condition to maintain the existing vegetative buffer? Obviously, you can trim. You have to trim and keep those trees healthy.
Yeah. There's nothing that we would have to cut back because, again, the drain that we're going for is very close to my building. It's what?
Six feet from the building?
It's not even six feet.
Yeah. It looks like the line... Looks like the line goes right back, actually, under where the addition is gonna go.
Yes. That's what I'm saying. It would be... The drain is within the addition, so we don't need to cut back any vegetation or pull any vegetation in order to access the drains. And again, my desire for aesthetic purposes, because I will have clients in that space, is to maintain an aesthetic, natural vegetation between ourselves and Tire Warehouse. Not that we don't like Tire Warehouse. They're wonderful, but...
It's a different aesthetic.
It's a different aesthetic.
Very well phrased. Very well phrased. Any further questions for the applicant?
Did I answer that?
I believe so, yes.
Complaint sufficiently?
Yes. Thank you. Hearing none, I'm gonna thank you. And we are gonna move to deliberations at this point. So you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Yes, that's... Thank you for your time.
Pleasure. Oh, stay. Oh, I thought you... Thank you for your time. I thought you were leaving. No, no, no. Stick around. We make our decisions right on the spot. Okay. Obviously, with a variance, I believe we should go through the variance criteria, so I'm gonna ask somebody to do that for us. But let me just start by saying, does anybody have any comments or questions to lead us off?
Well, I'd like to just kind of go through the concerns of the abutter, you know, without the person here to give more detailed explanations. I'm just trying to understand their concerns and see if they're relevant. And I agree that the location of their property is not near this proposed addition. They said that it would impact the proposed buyer, who was considering enlarging the building on her property, which I don't see how that could be.
It's well over 100 feet off of her property.
Well, I mean, she can do... She can seek relief on her own property. This won't affect... This relief on somebody else's property will not affect her. In fact, it would set a little bit of a precedent for relief in the neighborhood. So I don't see that as an issue. I don't know what she's... You know, I don't really understand the concern about resale limitations. And let's see.
I think her point number five...
Value will be diminished. I don't... I, again, don't see how that could happen based on this.
I don't know.
It's not close enough. It's not gonna change anything. It's not a detrimental use, and...
And there is no restriction on future sales of either her property of her property? This in no way would impact a restriction on a future sale of her property?
And if we're missing what the intent of these points were, you know, I apologize, but I just... Based on what was stated, I cannot understand that there's any legitimate concern here for most of these points. So just thought that was worth mentioning. It will not cost the abutter anything to have this, in my opinion, so...
Agreed. Thank you for that. Who'd like to walk through the variance criteria, please? Esther reached for her blue sheet.
I know. I don't like to, but I feel like I should at some point do one of these.
That was a commitment if I ever saw one. Thank you, Esther.
Okay. Here we go. Never done this before. So variance criteria 1 and 2 were together. The variance is not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I think that's the case. She wants to put in a new facility for her veterinary practice. There really isn't another spot to put it. I don't... It's not overly large for the area. I think she's getting what she needs to do the work. She's not going overboard. Just enough to get that aqua paw in there or whatever it is.
So it's not contrary to the public interest?
No.
And that the public is not negatively impacted by this? The spirit of the ordinance in this area is to maintain an orderly separation between buildings and to have a certain amount of consistency there, but I don't think that this is going to have a dramatic impact. And I believe the spirit of the ordinance will continue to be observed.
See, you're so much better at this. This is why I don't grab my blue sheet.
But I'm not allowed to read them. Talk.
Okay. Three. Substantial justice is done. That's probably more my explanation previously, that allows them to expand their business with little to no harm on the general public or other individuals in the area. Value... The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. There's... Nobody has come in to indicate that that would be true.
The only commentary to that effect has been already addressed in terms of the letter from Ms. Markey.
Yes. Number five. Little enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Unnecessary hardship means, because of special conditions of the property that disuades you from other properties in the area, there's no fair substantial relationship between the general public's purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision in the property and the proposed use is a reasonable one. I do believe she showed that there really isn't an alternative on that location due to the swale in the back on the sides. It's pretty much the only spot she can expand her business. And for us to do that, it's a bigger hardship on her than it would on anybody surrounding.
I think... Yeah. And that was where I was going with the questions about the detention bond. It sounds like that is... That needs to stay. I also would factor in the existing buffer. And, you know, I'm probably gonna... Just as a heads up, I think I'm probably gonna ask for a condition that that be maintained, because I think that's part of it and will add extra protection for that, the most affected abutter.
Thank you, Esther. Any further discussion? If not, I'd be willing to accept a motion at this time.
Don't you do the motion if you have a condition or...
Well, I guess let's discuss it because I don't want to make a motion... I mean, do we want to discuss whether people think the condition is appropriate? And what I'm thinking is a condition to maintain the existing... The existing tree buffer along the... I have to get my directions, but along the... That side.
Tire Warehouse side.
Boundary line.
Toward Epping Road.
I think I'd feel better if it was worded differently because in construction, I don't want them not to be able to build now because they can't touch a tree.
Right.
I went over there. They probably won't, but I want them... They have to cut off... Cut down a tree to get the building completed, and now they can't.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I was talking about trees instead of just vegetation because I don't know what the brush situation...
It's a lot of trees. Couple bushes. It's a lot of trees, a couple bushes, it's not, it's substantial. I think if they cut down one, you're not gonna notice it, but I just wanna make sure it's broad enough that it stays there to protect the neighbor, but doesn't hinder them.
Right.
My understanding of maintaining a buffer is that if one tree dies or is knocked down, that you replace it.
Yeah, well, and if there's a dead or dying tree, you're permitted.
Language to that effect?
Yeah.
So. I suggest you give it a shot.
It's a good thought Esther, but I think that they can.
Yeah, I think it's if you just word it maintain versus don't touch it.
Yeah, yep. And people are fine with the vegetative buffer, I just don't know what the, it sounds like there's enough.
It's, it's pretty, yeah.
Okay, all right, well then I guess, since I stuck my neck out there, I will, I will make a motion to approve the application of Dr. Hannah Wells for a variance from Article 5, Section 4.4, Schedule 3, for relief from the side yard setback to permit the construction of a 15-foot by 20-foot addition to the existing structure, as shown on the plan submitted, and with the, upon the condition that the vegetative buffer along the right side property line be maintained.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, you're all set, 5-0, thank you very much for coming out.
Don't offer that, I have a disaster at my house.
Humans might be in the water tank. Right. Before moving on to the next item on the agenda, it has been suggested that it would be in our best interest to approve the minutes of the May 20, 2025 meeting prior to the Pickpocket Abboter Group request for rehearing. So, we're gonna move on, please, to the May 2025 minutes on which Esther, Laura, myself, Kevin, and Mark can vote, so we have five. Are there any comments on the May 20, 25 minutes?
I, I think I had some, nothing dramatic, but a couple things. Line 257, under 676-13, a building, no, that's the wrong line, sorry. Yeah, that's the right line. A building permit cannot, I think it should say be issued unless it's compliant, it says issue.
Cannot issue, cannot be issued, line 257, be issued. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Line 270, maybe this is exactly what was said, it didn't, it wasn't clear to me what was meant, where it says he takes umbrage with trying to distinguish accurate. I didn't know if anybody else had a recollection of.
I think accurate was a case, that's why it's got, so it's.
Yeah.
And distinguish, just distinguish.
Distinguish is a term of art. I, I don't remember exactly what was said, but I suspect that was, that was what was said, intentional.
Okay. Good enough, and then 280. He never imagined that a project of this scale in the Arwen zoning district, without a special exception. I think it should be, could be allowed.
So the he is me, so let me read it.
Yeah, well, and I do wonder, Bob, if you should be voting on this. I know you were participating in the second part, but if this goes, if, if these minutes are, are brought up in the future, I don't know, I'm wondering if we have four, maybe we just go with, maybe better to just go with four.
Interesting point, I was gonna vote on it because under two other business, I did check back in and participate in that discussion, but we do have four.
I don't think you should comment on this part of, of it, though.
Fine.
I, I think that would be better.
I'll let you guys.
Figure out what you said.
Imagine what I said.
I, I mean.
I'll agree, Kevin, I agree, that's fine.
And I think he never imagined that a project of this scale in the Arwen zoning district, you know, without a special exception be requested and acted on by the ZBA.
Okay.
I think that's the intent. Bob was probably more articulate than that, because he generally is, but I think that, that was the gist of it, yeah.
Okay, so add be requested and acted upon?
Yes.
Okay. And. I guess. That would be it for me.
Anyone else besides Laura have comments on the minutes?
I did not.
Nope.
Can I call the vote without getting in trouble?
Do we, do we need to go through, okay, never mind.
Since I am allowed to comment, I did read other business, and I had no comments on that.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to verify.
I did read other business and had no comments on that. So, all those in favor of approving the May 20, 25 minutes as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
4-0. Minutes are approved. With that, I am going to recuse myself from the next application and ask Ms. Davies to take over.
Okay, so. The other matter that we have to deal with tonight is the Pickpocket Abboter Group, ZBA Case 25-2, request for rehearing on the appeal of a planning board decision made on February 13, 2025, regarding Riverwood's new supportive living health center. So we had a request for rehearing, the request was submitted by the Pickpocket Abboter Group's counsel, and. The application for the rehearing lays out some history and outlines some arguments. I think it makes sense for us to go through the arguments and discuss them, and then to vote on this application for rehearing, so.
Can I just, before we start, because I think it's helpful for requests for rehearing, just to outline the, the scope of review, which is, our decision on whether or not we think rehearing is necessary is whether there was, there is new evidence that wasn't available at the time of the decision, or errors of law. I think generally that the applicant here is, is arguing that there were errors of law.
Correct, yes, there's, I don't think they've indicated any new information in their argument, but it is based on the interpretation of the law. So, the argument states that there was no vote to adopt Mr. Eastman's position, and no one clarified Mr. Eastman's position, even though the members of the planning board were confused about what it was, and. That because of that, the planning board's consideration of the matter created independent grounds for appeal under RSA 676-5, so. I think that the, the main argument is that the, the ZBA misconstrued Pickpocket's appeal of the planning board decision as a de facto appeal of Mr. Eastman's March letter, and I know that was your contention in the deliberations, Kevin. Their, their argument is stating that the planning board never voted to adopt Mr. Eastman's position, that there was just discussion, clearly confusion, but no clear resolution to that, and they just voted to approve the application anyway. So if you want to discuss that, we can.
Yeah, I, I obviously, I disagree with that analysis, and I think it was, you know, we discussed that that night. No, there was no express vote of the planning board whether to, you know, adopt or not adopt Doug Eastman's letter, but there was a clear discussion, and I think that a, the record reflects, and we talked about it, trying to think, I took notes on it somewhere, it's on, you know, line, around line 230, I talked about it at the hearing, I don't remember what the reference to the planning board minutes was, although that's in the, that's, that should be in the record as well. That, that, in my mind, there was a clear discussion and a clear determination that Ms., you know, Doug Eastman's letter had been, consideration Doug Eastman's letter and a decision in going forward relying on that letter. So I don't think the fact that there was, whether or not there was an express vote taken or not, the planning board clearly considered the determination made and relied on it. And I think we, you know, I, I don't think we, we missed that. I understand that, you know, that the applicants don't agree with that position, but I don't think we misunderstood that or missed it. And we, we spoke directly to it.
So their, their position is that that is not the case, obviously. We did address it in our deliberations and, and voted accordingly. And then the second argument is that even if the appeal was a de facto, you know, and they're required to state all their arguments at this point in time, if they're going to rely on anything later, so they're, they're stating all their arguments, and even if the appeal was de facto appeal of Mr. Eastman's letter, Eastman did not make an administrative decision, therefore RSA does not bar the appeal. And the basis of that argument is the administrative decision is any decision involving the construction interpretation or application of the terms of the zoning ordinance, and they're saying that there is no evidence that Eastman's letter construed, interpreted, or applied any terms of the zoning ordinance in discussing special exceptions. The letter doesn't even reference special exceptions, and I have to say, I have sympathy for that part of it, because I did not see it that way for months, and, and continue not to really see it that way, so. That's my opinion. There was no discussion, there was no explanation, there was no basis for, no reasoning of the necessary need to completely bypass the whole special exception process. It was not even mentioned as having to do with special exception. It just said it was, it was permitted by right, and that's it, boom, done. In no notice, private letter.
That, yeah.
So.
The notice is a separate issue, and I actually would like to speak to that too, but, yeah, I, I think you and I differ on this issue. In my mind, I don't, I don't agree with the argument that because there's no, I mean, it seems to be saying because there's no explicit step-by-step walkthrough of the zoning ordinance in the letter, that it doesn't interpret the ordinance. I think it, there's no question in my mind that Doug Eastman interpreted the zoning ordinance when he issued a letter that said that the use was permitted by right.
I would have loved to have seen the reason explained, because it was not really discussed, it was a two-sentence affair.
I think that's a different story, there's no question that, I mean, then you can, you know, the argument can be that Doug Eastman acted arbitrarily and incorrectly, but I don't think, I don't think the record shows that he, that, that his determination didn't take into consideration the terms of the zoning ordinance. I think it's pretty clear it, it did, it may not have articulated it to the degree people liked or wished, but.
Or is required by the law, because it says it's supposed to interpret, and.
But that's a different issue, this is, the question here is, I mean, in my mind, the question is, do you, the decision was based on the zoning ordinance. Whether it was a correct decision, whether it was fully thought out, there can be an argument about that, but I don't think there is any argument whether Doug Eastman considered the ordinance and made his decision based on the zoning.
I think it was a bypassing of the zoning ordinance myself, but I understand you feel differently.
Well, I think there's a difference between being maybe wrong, and maybe, you know, ignoring or misconstruing parts of the zoning ordinance, and a claim to say the zoning ordinance doesn't even apply here, it's not even related to the decision. I think it's pretty clearly in my mind a zoning determination. Again, whether you agree with the determination or not is a different story, but, you know, it's not like he looked, it was a question if, of. Ownership, or an easement, or something like that, it was, this meets, now meets the zoning, and, and is permitted by right. And again, whether it's correct or not is, is not the specific question here. I, I think it, I'd be hard pressed to say that.
I don't know how you say it's not a specific question here, I'm confused about where, where that comes from.
Well, I don't think that what, what the, this letter is arguing is that he didn't, it wasn't an administrative decision, because the, the determination in that letter doesn't address the zoning ordinance at all, it doesn't consider, it didn't rely on the zoning ordinance. I think it, in my mind, it clearly did. Whether you think it was wrong, or, you know, whether it was not fully articulated or properly articulated, I think is a different issue than whether it considered.
Well, it says that administration, administrative decision is supposed to construe, interpret, or apply any term of the zoning ordinance. And I, I didn't see that in the decision that was written, but anyway.
I, I think the determination that, under the, I mean.
He didn't write out step-by-step, I looked at this, here's my finding, I think that is what people are looking for, and that's not how it works. There's no, it's not required that he does that. Does he do that in the back office? Probably, that's his job.
Well, that's what the RSA says, that an administrative decision is.
And he's doing those things, they're just not outlined in that letter that was sent, is how I would see it. Because he doesn't have.
A lot of things didn't happen the way they were meant to happen in a, in a zoning process in this case.
I guess in this case too, what he did is allowed. And that's again, that's, that's an interpretation that you don't agree with, but he, he did not break any rules doing this, he didn't go behind everybody's back to be sneaky, he is allowed to do administrative decisions, and that's what he did.
And I think the question, again, the threshold question is, was that decision, did it involve an interpretation of the zoning ordinance? And the, the argument is that it, it doesn't have to do anything to do with the zoning ordinance, and I'm not, I just don't.
I don't think that is the argument though, Kevin, I disagree with that statement, that that's the argument.
How does it not construe, if he's making a determination that, that the use is permitted by right, meaning no variance is required, I would argue also meaning no special exception is required, and he did, you know, specifically talk about a variance, how does that not construe, interpret, or apply the zoning ordinance? I mean, I think it clearly construes and interprets the zoning ordinance.
Okay, well, I disagree. I think that it bypasses the process of the zoning ordinance, that the zoning ordinance is set up to, you know, protect the community, and it bypassed that, but that's my opinion, I understand you don't agree, and we can discuss it more.
Yeah, and I don't, and I, I do think we don't agree, but I think your, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I, I think your position is that it was improperly interpreted, because it ignored the terms of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I do think it ignored the zoning ordinance, there, there we go.
Yeah, I think, and that's, I think, please, please, we are, we're in deliberation. But it is, it is, in my mind, it is a different issue whether it, whether it was an improper application of the zoning ordinance, it was still an interpretation of the zoning ordinance. But if I, I mean, and I think we probably leave it.
Yeah, I think we should leave it there, I don't agree, I don't see it, but. If we have anybody else who wants to ask questions, discuss, John, anything for you?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here, and acting more as an observer of the events unfolding.
I appreciate that, thank you. Mark, any comments, any observations?
No, I'm just still trying to probably wrap my head around both of your points. No, not at this point, not at this time.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
I have a question about. So we are voting whether or not the initial ZBA meeting we had was going over the determination of Doug's interpretation of the ZBA.
We're voting on whether or not the Pickpocket Abboter Group gets to have a rehearing.
Well.
Based on. Based on new information, or if we feel that we voted incorrectly based on law.
Yeah. Did we make an error of law?
So, if we allow the rehearing, we will discuss basically these issues again. If we don't have a rehearing, then that's the end of it, for us, anyway, for this venue.
Okay. Then, no, I don't have any questions.
Am I right with that assessment?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's.
So, are we ready to vote? Anything else? No? Okay. So, all those in favor of granting the request of the Pickpocket a Butter Group to, for a rehearing of their appeal of the planning board decision?
Is this a vote to approve the request?
Yes. I will vote in favor. All those opposed?
Aye.
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 John, are you going to vote, or are you going to abstain?
He has to vote.
He has to vote.
Well, he can't, he can abstain.
Okay.
I can't, oh, okay. So, it's three to one?
It would be three to one with one abstention.
Okay.
Is that, you have to affirmatively state what you're doing.
Oh, abstain? Or is that a, an avenue?
I, I think the applicant would have preferred if you said you weren't going to vote at the beginning, but, because that would have offered them the opportunity to wait for a board that had five voting members.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean.
So, if you vote with you.
I guess you could, you can still abstain, that's always, I believe you're right still, but it has put, it, it effect, would have been nice to hear that at the beginning, I guess.
At the beginning of the hearing, the applicant is allowed to wait for five voting members.
Oh, okay.
So, if you're abstaining at this point, it probably would have been good for them to know that at the beginning, so that they could have exercised that right.
Although, in this case, I do wonder if we could have, because I don't know that we have any more.
Nope.
Members.
Members.
Martha?
Yeah.
Do we have any other available members?
I think, but I think the answer is, you, if, you have the, you have the option to abstain, you have the option to vote, and you, you know, if you've read, you've, you've read the materials and you've read the minutes, then you can, you can vote.
And these are all the Pickpocket people?
Yes.
Okay, so, my vote doesn't really change the outcome of this at all.
But it's still a vote.
Okay.
It doesn't.
I'll vote with Laura here.
So, you vote.
Yes.
To approve the application for.
Request.
A request for rehearing.
Right.
Okay, so, is that enough?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. All right. So, we have a three to two vote that denies the application.
So, we still have one set of.
We got one set of, one set of minutes left.
Yep. Do we just have the one?
We, we didn't get, the July 1st wasn't in there.
Right, but do we approve May 20th?
Yeah, we just did that.
Yeah, we did it before we.
Oh, that's the same as this, okay.
Yeah, we, I brought my old one, too, and I got.
Pardon me for that. It was obvious.
Yeah, one with numbers and one without.
Would you like to continue, Laura, since you were the member, since you were in charge of the June 17 meeting, and I wasn't even here?
Sure. So, we are considering the June 17 minutes. Members present were myself, Esther Olson-Murphy, Martha, who is not here tonight, Laura, who is not here tonight, Laura Montagno, and Mark Lemos, and John Del Santo. So, we have enough people to vote on this if we approve the minutes, but first of all, let's just talk about whether anybody saw any errors or concerns.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Shockingly. The lawyer for them did not identify himself. Can we get that information? Do we?
Uh.
Line, sorry, 31. The applicant's representative who did not identify himself said.
So, this is June, so it was.
It was a gentleman.
I believe he did, and his, it's Mr. Durbin to his name.
Yeah, it was whoever that was on that.
Yes.
At the application, so.
I think, is it Derek Durbin?
It's Derek Durbin.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And my other.
And he should know better, and should have identified himself.
I thought he had.
I did, too.
It may have been sort of mumbly, but I thought he had, but I could be wrong.
On line 50, do we know why only three people voted? I thought Martha and Laura would have voted as well.
Line 50.
On the back, motion passes three zero.
Oh, that's wrong. Okay, so, Mark, myself, you.
Martha and Laura.
We all, I think we all voted.
Yeah.
Aye. So.
Did I just have heard the ayes on the recording, or?
So, there were how many? One, two?
Five.
Three. All five of us?
Mm-hmm.
John, did you vote?
No, he was an observer that night.
Right. So, there was four of us then, right? Or is that?
One, two, three, four, nope. You, me, Martha.
Oh, Martha, sorry.
Laura, and Mark.
So, Martha is not listed here in the, in the.
She's on the.
In the voting box.
Yeah, Martha and Laura Montagno aren't listed.
And they both voted? Okay, so it was five zero. Okay. So, we should just have their names added?
Yep, and change to five.
And, yeah.
What should be verified against the tape to make sure that everybody in fact did.
Is this to approve the previous minutes? Is this the?
This is June 17 minutes.
No, no, I know, the, the vote.
The vote is to.
To continue the ZBA case.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I was trying to think, maybe they might have abstained because they weren't at the previous meeting?
I'm fairly confident everybody voted on.
Yeah.
That, unless we, no, because you voted, like, can alternates not vote, but if you voted, then alternates can clearly vote, too, so.
Yeah, no, Martha, Martha's the one who brought up the issue of, of the notice.
She's quiet.
Oh, it was that one?
But she's quiet. Yeah, she definitely voted. Okay. And Laura did as well, I think.
That is my full recollection. I couldn't have, I think we remember them not, but let's double-check the tape.
Yes.
I sat next to Martha, I remember her voting.
Okay.
To continue it because of the, to July 1st.
She's the one who had identified the fact that the voters were missing, so she would have voted.
Okay, that's all I had.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, did they come back?
Who?
Last week.
They came July 1st.
July 1st, two weeks ago.
Oh, that you guys had a special meeting?
Yes.
They were very persuasive.
Did you approve?
Okay. How did that go?
They got approved, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I wasn't there.
Do you have to vote on the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, all those, so, all those, well, I need a motion, actually.
I move to approve the minutes of June 17, 2025 as amended?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't there.
Okay. So, the three of us are voting on this.
No, John voted.
Oh, John, you voted?
Yeah, he was there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He can vote. He said aye.
Perfect. So, four, four zero. Okay, very good.
Thus concludes the meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
I was requesting.
I know, but I'm going to, I'm going to pretend you're not chair, so you can do it.
So, moved.
All those in favor?
Moved and seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.